Commissionsers Tuesday, July fourteenth, twenty twenty at four thirty P M. If I want to please stand, Commissioner Fleming will do our application and our pledge.
Let's pray. The heavenly Father, the Father, and the King, thank you for all your blessings, praise your blessings, watch over Texas. In spite of what's going on around you, pray should have mercy on the comers, be your children, and you our God, we call on your name because in times like these we need a Savior. Father, we pray to bless us in that being especially called be with today, watch your lips. Bless all the commissioners, all the faculty, staff, the country, God, we need you, Father, and we pray should bless all that's in the pandemic. Pray, God, that you watch over it and make a way out of nowhere. We call your name, we live, then we all right. Father, we ask these in all blessings, in Jesus' name we pray, amen.
By thy name, to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mr. Fleming. Once again, I'd like to welcome everyone. Our first item of business today is approval of renewal resolution declaring Duncan State emergency due to COVID nineteen, then in March seventeenth, twenty twenty. Do I have any questions, comments, do I have a motion to approve?
Certainly.
Second. Got a motion by Commissioner Gamble, second by Commissioner Richardson, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign, motion carries. Item two, discuss possible board action authorization to enter into an agreement with Foundation Professionals Professionals of Florida for emergencies and co repairs within initial estimate of cost of forty-five thousand dollars budget impact paid from contingency. Any comments, Mr. Perry?
Yes, sir. Couple of things, one, for the record. For the record. This says it will be paid from contingency, I would rather, I want to change that to read that it will come from general revenue. And there's just a technical issue with that, and that's the reason. So it'll be funded from general revenue. I'll also point out to you that that forty-five thousand is an estimate. It's very possible that it could be more than that, it could be less than that, depends on what they're running to when they begin routing. I had, like the next item on your agendas to pay an invoice. I had a company go out there, did ground penetrating radar and electroresistivity testing to try to determine what the limits of that void are under that track. They did a thorough job on it, they gave us a report on that. But at the same time, we're still dealing with something that's underground. So I want the board to understand that that cost could be greater than that. And once they're mobilized and they're routing, we can't stop and say we need to run back to the board and give them the twenty thousand dollars. This is a process like all routing, where you just do what you have to do. So the board needs to understand that when you go ahead and authorize entering into this.
Just to be clear, what we're speaking of is the sun coldness, come about it, the.
The paddles underneath the rails, boy.
It is the forty-five and not the twenty-five, see, because I see that you got forty-five, estimate cost of forty-five until it's down. But then the thing with the amount of twenty-five dollars, you have.
No, that's twenty-five hundred to the.
Twenty-five.
Geo Hazards is the company, that's your next agenda item, that's the work that was done to with the ground penetrating radar and other instruments to try to determine how large that void was on the track.
Have any other questions, comments, do I have a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Got a motion by Commissioner Fleming?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Hale, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign, motion carries. Item number three, approval of payment in the amount of twenty-five hundred dollars to Geo Hazards Inc. for evaluation and report and authorized finance, want to at least the same. Questions, comments, do I have a motion to approve?
Certainly.
Got a motion to approve by Mr. Richardson, second by Commissioner Gamble, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign, motion carries. This time, do we have any other business need, needs that you consider regarding COVID nineteen? Mr. Walden, come, come give us the short version.
Yes, sir, back to be happy to. Mission appreciate it very quickly, I'll be brief, but as of today, we have seven hundred and sixty-one cases that are reported out. We're still at twenty-two deaths. One thing I would caution you, and the numbers that I've been tracking is that our age bracket that seems to be the leading percentage is our fifteen to twenty-four year olds. They're leading with the number of cases, that sixteen percent of those cases are in those age bracket, followed very closely by thirty-five to forty-four. So we're still trending, seeing younger people that are, that are getting the virus. We have a regional testing event taking place right now at Coliseum, they supposed to start at eleven, started at ten after, quarter after ten. As of three P M., they have seen three hundred and eighty-nine people, and they plan on going until seven P M. tonight. And so we also plan to, and we appreciate Mr. Scott and their assistance, Sheriff's Department and county folks and Live Police Department for working with us on that facility. Changed up the format a little bit, where we're actually bringing the vehicles into a building so that the staff that's coming from the state can stay cooler than what it has been, so that we can test longer. And the new format seems to have worked quite well today. But we plan on testing there on the twenty-first and again on the twenty-eighth. We'll be in Bradford this weekend, on the eighteenth, at Hyde Park, from eight A M. to ten A M., testing down there as well. And so far, in Swan County, we've tested five thousand one hundred and sixty-four people, of which eighty-five percent of us have been negative, and seven hundred and sixty-one positive cases. Be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Mr. Richardson, one clarification, you said what park in Bradford?
Excuse me, hash, hash.
Okay, I thought you said Hyde.
I said Hyde, hash park, excuse me, it's hash park.
Any questions for?
Yeah, I have. Well, just to, for public knowledge, when you guys do testing, mass testing, they come from all over, not just Swan County?
That's right.
If they, someone say from Madison or Greenville, wherever, came here to get tested, where does that get reported back to? Does that get counted here or back to their hometown, or how do you guys track it?
The actual number, number of folks tested will get counted for, we had five hundred people tested in Swan County. However, when it was resulted, it will go back to the county of residence.
County of residence.
And if they're in Georgia, it goes back to Georgia, and if it's another county, it goes back to another county. We, we have to transfer cases out sometimes because folks will be visiting and get tested that actually live elsewhere in the state. And once we do our contact tracing investigation, we find out, well, y'all were just really here for a day or two, so technically you belong to the county in which you reside.
Any other questions?
Thanks, sir.
Thank you.
Appreciate you. Parks and Rec, Mr. Greg, it's done. Welcome, sir.
Mr. I'd like y'all to use microphones, we're best, master, very well. Just wanted to run a couple of to buy you, I'm not really needing any action, but it has a request from good using facilities, we've not opened them up yet, except for we did a couple, and it's all aware of which we know. But Rotary, for example, is looking for a place that's larger, where they spread out some. With rules I read, there's fifty percent passing still in larger venues. I will get your input on that, if, obviously you worked through that process, if that you sure shouldn't. You allow some, some county staffing to, to buy some spaces, where they've got very small groups using train. But we haven't opened it up for a murder club or a reunion, anything like that. I feel more comfortable in a luncheon setting that we can control, if we're willing to afford, as opposed to a reunion where you have no control. But just any thoughts? Any concerns?
I think it just comes down to the number of people, really.
If Rotary was going to be twenty-five to thirty, if we put in X two or possibly Coliseum, then there's ten room to spread out. We would set up tables and chairs so we kept spacing, so. The ranch is good back to real meetings, not virtual meetings, but.
I mean, I would, I would entertain, you know, I would probably feel better about it in the Coliseum itself, where there's more space, space and airflow and height. I mean, there's a lot of folks that's just trying to figure out a way that's been completely out of business as far as clubs and trying to get any revenue and stay flowed and maybe get closed down for four or five months, I mean, it's just terrible. I would like to hear your thoughts of the board.
I agree, the larger the area, more square footage, you're making square, not more than six feet, like ten feet.
And I, and I think we can look through this process internally, I don't think we can get, you know, say, what action to, to afford, it just usually like common sense to, again, I set up tables and chairs, so you say, this is asking to be set up here. They would do like a box lunch or something, not, or if they, if they, if you say, even those you can talk through. The other thing, we had a promoter, when they do the outdoor, when they do indoor concerts, they, they're going to do an outside concert using the arena or the fairgrounds in October. We, at the end of October, and you know, we met by record the other day, and, you know, basically, they were saying, if the actual, they're near the actual today, you didn't know. But if, but I want to hear your thoughts also on, you know, carry dirt and, you know, just. I don't know in that setting how you can control the people to answer it.
Then I would say it's probably two hundred and fifty, something like that. I just, I would be comfortable this time, make that decision, or making much comment on it, with that many people, I mean, there's this thing takes a turn every week, anyways.
So I'd rather work with, usually if we're not insured, try selling the, from the, from the.
And that's same place where it was on it, that they don't know where we're going to be in October. And it's hard to tell, yeah, you can do it in October, but, or tell them no, but they can't even do now. Well, they got to start planning and advertising before it's reported, so. I just, it's, it's hard to give you an extra map, but I hope they need to, as the way I'm taking it, anyway.
Exactly. So I'm, I'm gonna hold off until we, until a miracle happens, whether that's going to be, I, you know, you're not sure what that's going to be.
Just, just to clarify with the board, do I have any other comments or feelings on the public service clubs meeting that?
Not my problem, those, my only concern with that was, i- if we ever looked at the service clubs, are we going to set a, just half occupancy or what? If you start letting one group go, how do you turn another group down? It's just if we're going to let it go, we're just going to let it go, and say it's got to be a half occupancy for that. Unless you think that something's different.
I think the bottom line is the distancing.
Right.
Right. So the occupancy isn't going to put you there, especially ensuring that you know what their total number is in that building then.
But that's what I mean, we need to set a number, we need to have a number.
Can't go over that number.
Because I just don't want to get in the business of picking.
Department to get the total number and just make sure that the distance can be maintained.
Right.
And then the size of the group.
It all depends on the setting, if you use tables or chairs, that changes.
Almost as likely to get in there, set up tables one time, and you can tell what you got.
Yeah.
Can get a count visually versus physically. We know a funny people who had that up, I feel confident. So I think.
I would, I would agree to what you said. Once you know the number, inside the building, and in a controlled area, that, that social distance, it wouldn't be a problem. I, I want to say, I'm coming in, I appreciate how you're handling that, handling some issues concerning that, that the big justice, or what, what we've been doing, that it has been a pleasure with the distance and, you know, with the magnitude of people. I think more people were here, I think last week at this meeting, at our meeting, and, but I appreciate how you're handling that.
Appreciate it, and I don't care if you've been a backup, tell someone no, I mean, you know, that's, that's why we pay.
Well, you're going to be my sister from now on. Board right on, you know, it's just busy right now.
Hey, have you ever taken a call from a mom whose son's on the wrong baseball team?
I'll give, I'll give him my phone number too.
I don't want the sheriff's.
What about the, Mr. Chairman, what about, if we do somebody too, you gotta have this infected clean.
We're, we're more screwed, I'm sure something.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Also, Greg, I know we typically have the kind of indemnification, whole parks, you know, any, any agreement there. I think I may need to add another line or two, you know, to that, for the record agreement, if you just send me a copy of that and go from there.
We, I'll send you also, if we sign for two sports, we'll do that also.
Barnes to Coliseum, though, if it's a family function, isn't it, rent it out? How are we handling that if it's going to be?
We're not, we're not, we haven't done any of those yet.
That's what I'm.
But that's saying, asking, right?
If we do, if we do it for all those, I don't. That would be weekends and evenings, and we have to assign a staff that can make sure that they're doing or asking, I don't think we can control that.
Well, I'm, I'm not saying that, I'm saying how do we, how do we handle them to clubs, is what I'm saying, just for clarification.
They, they would be, they can contact us, we'll rent it, just like we do, you know, here in Douglas, in every, every county facility. We schedule it and rent it, and we will have our staff monitoring, you know, housing relax. Currently, we have to open doors for the parade, close doors, so we have staff in and out.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
How do we separate the renting the thing out at all to anyone without saying, by saying yes to some and no to others, without having a policy on what we're actually renting them for? Because if you're renting the clubs for, for a luncheon, then who's to say that you're not going to be able to rent it to a family for a luncheon, same type of luncheon, but it's still a private organization or a private group? I'd rather have less discrimination on, on who, to whom we rent it, and more on the purpose of the rentals, and have something actually said, so, you know, if you're going to do luncheons, luncheons, we set them up, we set up for the, we, we set the number of people, maximum occupancy on any, any of our facilities. And, and we set up the, the tables and everything else for them to make sure that they're, they're, they stay compliant with it. Rather than just saying, well, some can rent it and some can't. Get what I'm concerned about, my concern is that. Sure, I, I don't really see the, I, I think that, that we can get in trouble by saying we can, we'll rent it to, let's say Rotary, but we won't rent it to, this family wants to have a reunion.
We're not going to, it's a koala school.
I know, I'm sorry, but I'm, you understand what I'm getting at, I mean, it's a private group, it's a private group, it doesn't matter who it is. I don't want to be, I don't want to be discriminating against one private group or another private group, I just, I think we ought to say, hey, we're going to do it, we're going to do it only for these particular types of functions, and we have more control of it. In that way, there's, you had mentioned that family reunions.
Unless you go for public service clubs and not do reunions right now, how about that? Would that work for you? And it's just during the daytime?
That's what I was thinking.
But it's public service clubs, they're doing things to help the community. It's not just getting together with your family and having a barbecue, so, so it's a little different to me, I mean, that's, but that's my, my take on this point.
But are they, but can, and I'd be curious what the council would say, are they still considered private organizations? I mean, private groups, private groups. Are we separating by groups, or we separating, separating by function?
If we, nothing, if we did anything, I think it all goes back to the number. And I don't know how many members are on these clubs and things like that versus a reunion or something, but I would think the clubs are a smaller amount. Maybe it just sticks to the number of people, period.
Most of the clubs would be thirty or less.
Well, what I was thinking, you set it to the number that we want, if we say, you, you can't space it more than fifty people out of same place, so you set the number of fifty. If I heard Mr. Scott right, anything that's on the weekend or after hours, we'll have to stat somebody there. The service clubs don't need on weekends or after hours, so let's just say that we'll rent it out, the occupancy number of this, their normal operating hours, yeah.
Right.
And that way we don't have to put additional staff there.
And, and to me, I would want to make sure we understand, is there a need to read, see how things work, and how they not work? There's lots of, there's a lot of, there's a lot of boring and stuff. Thank you.
Thanks, sir. Thanks, Greg. Sir, if you got anything for us, you good? Ms. Hanks, have you got anything for us? You good? Mr. Norris, you got anything for us?
Sure.
Minute and a half.
You get generous.
And it's already started, twenty eleven to see.
Hey, this, this is, Mr. Harris's phone anyway, so.
If that's not good news, I don't want to hear it.
You don't need. Just a quick update, Commissioner Fleming, I'm not sure, we didn't make a call yesterday, we couldn't see.
I don't.
I didn't know anyone. But we, we, we did have a call yesterday with the Lieutenant Governor, basically it was about the census. And just a quick update, long story short, the state of Florida is way behind the national average, and most counties are way behind the state of Florida, and it's not looking good. Now, saying that, Commissioner Fleming was on the call, I think he can vouch for the, we're way ahead of what all the other counties were talking about.
What was that, what was that kind of?
Our participation rate right now is fifty-four point two.
Oh, we, we were flying.
Right, so what, what, kind of what's happening is a lot of these other counties are just, I, the way the calls seem, just kind of figured out maybe this is important. And, and they said they were going to start working on this, well, you know, we're, we started working on this last August, so. There were many questions that Lieutenant Governor couldn't answer that we could have answered, my community could have answered, so. It was informative, I guess, to some degree, we're kind of ahead of the game, but we're still behind, and so is everybody else in the state for most part, so. They are also worried about, obviously that affects representation as we move forward too. You know, if we're behind, we're not going to be able to get all the votes we need to get to represent the state of Florida, so. Just a call to say, we would all tighten up, do the best job we can, actually our census committee needs to, we're going to be kind of far, so. I still, I want to add to that too, also.
Yes, sir.
You know, sometimes we, we look at it, and then they, but when we look at, and hear the numbers across the state of Florida, where we're standing versus where they're standing, makes you feel proud. And I don't know what other states are doing, but I, I was sitting there listening, and it comes to my question. How would it affect certain things, and a lot of us contributed to COVID nineteen, can't get out and do some things, and it's like elections, I think, we brought some of that up there. That you've got, people can't get out for, for the election, I don't know what that's going to do. Yeah, I think every county had a lot of challenges, and just like everybody else, we're kind of on five and same thing, but that came up with lots of different ideas and pretty much everything that eventually was Mr. Fleming can tell you, we've already done, we've already tried, we've already been there, done that. But we're still continuing on, the dates been pushed back until October. As of now, they're saying that still will come out in August, with the door to no operations. Speaking with Jennifer, she said part of the problem with there is, is because they're behind on training those people, and a lot of those people that originally had signed up have kind of decided, maybe I don't want to do that anymore. So they're short-staffed, and they're, they're not trained at this point, so a lot of this stuff, and I think that came up yesterday, because some, some, maybe it was the Lieutenant Governor said that it could be September or later. So, you know, we're, we're still trying, we're still out there, so, you know, we're still trying to work it, but we're exactly, I think, three percent, three points from where we would have been on our rate in two thousand and ten, our self response rate. So right now, group orders, they're supposed to be working on that, turning down in the middle of next month, and that'll be things like the prison, ALS nursing homes, things like that that are supposed to be killing. We are following and trying to track that, unfortunately, they do not want to tell us whether or not they have killed a certain facility, in other words, if I inquire about a certain ALS, as if they're killing, they won't answer that question. We're not asking for privileged information, just as a matter of fact, you know, but so far I can't give them the answer, because I want to be sure, I have a list of those facilities, I just want to be sure they don't miss it.
Mr.. Yes, sir.
Jimmy, I spoke about this at the development forum the other night, and I would think you would agree, our most, the most success we had was the callers, was that not from the library?
Yeah, we, we saw our greatest jump during that period, it was a combination of, there was some mailouts that were sent out in the second round with paper applications. But saying that, those paper applications went out to the whole country. And we know we had to be making a difference on the library piece, because we went from being middle of our district to being on the top every single week. So we, we definitely feel like those calls were making, were making a difference.
And I bring that up to just inquire, is that something we can make another push at with those folks? I, I don't know whether as far as what phase they're in, reopen, if they have employees that still have time to do something like that, but you were coming in with numbers two percent higher, three percent higher daily.
Oh, yeah, and we, we were, right, right now, I can tell you the last, each week, the last four to five weeks, we gained one tenth of one point. So in the last month, we haven't gained a half a point. We gained during that point in time, we were up, you know, three, four, five percent a week. So at a tenth of a point per week, you can do math, we're a little bit, we're not going to get there from here. And that's the average, in our district, that is the average for every county in our district that, that chief's working with. So it's not just us, it's just across the board, I mean, there's some counties that have had zero for two solid weeks, having that tenth of a point, so. I don't know, that's completely up to you guys, I mean, we're, we're, we're working right now, trying, you know, we're trying to get back into the churches, and that, they started kind of opening back up, and now some of them are talking about shutting back down again, and we're working with the Catholic Church right now, we'll be discussing more morning on the program. Before we're actually going to be going to the church and doing something there to buy people to come out and try to build registration drive at the facility there, so. We're, you know, we're out there, we're trying to do anything, we've talked about the back school backlash that's coming up, we're trying to see if I can get into that, but it's just difficult to, to get to the people. Everything we have planned kind of disappeared, but we're going to keep fighting. All of the, the stuff that the emeritors get, the points that, that, that they're out there signing people up, and the actual group orders piece of this will not be reflected in that number that, that is sent to us. It will just be our self response rate that, that is in that number. So we actually won't know our real number until after the first year, because they will not share that information with us, so. When we get through with our job here, we're going to have to wait seven months to find out what we really follow, but every single county is behind, and, you know, we're not to deal with this for ten years, so.
Any other comments for Mr. Norris?
My minute and a half.
I'll, I'll, I got one for you.
Oh, okay.
And I'll close with this for you. We don't need excuses, we need results, and that's why we hired you. So make us proud.
Well, we can do that.
I know you're the man for the job, this board's got all the confidence in you.
So I'm going to need you guys to help me cook at these events, we're getting these churches and these outings, so.
Well, I mean, if you guys think it was helpful, we can reach back out to Miss Betty and see if she's got some staff that can assist you and make another push.
You know, I, that, that's kind of, you, I, they made their way all the way through the phone book, that's what, you know, we've been told, and I do think it helped. What we would do if we hit them with a second time, it would basically be those people that they had to leave a message or didn't get an answer out right. I don't think you will have the same effect, but if. I don't think it will have the same effect, but I do think it may have some effect. I guess it's, you know, the amount of time it takes to do it versus the reward on the other side, is it worth it? And I don't want to infringe on her, if she has the time and she has some people willing to do it, even if it's just a couple of people, we've still got a couple of months. Even if it was a day or two a week, if it was, you know, we will take any help we can get.
Reach out to Mr. Norris, touch base and see what she says, let us know the next week, March.
Okay, and we're meeting tomorrow, we can bring it up, usually she is on that call or Ms. Amy, so.
Just follow up on that for us, that's the only thing that we, any luck with it?
Anyway, I want you guys to lab out, I mean, as Chris and Fleming can tell you, I mean, yeah, we're behind, but we're ahead of.
Thank you, appreciate you. At this time, I will open the floor to public comments. Do I have anyone wishing to speak? Come on, Mr. Hancock, I know you've got something on your mind.
I do.
You've been locked up at home a long time. Go up there and tell us about it.
Got to live.
Don't say that. Speaking of, I'm good.
Hello, Hancock, sixty-one thirty-five, Williams Room.
Welcome, sir.
The, there's been, we haven't been coming, obviously. But there's a lot of things that has been discussed in the past. Projects, I know some of the capital improvement projects have been placed on hold and things. But, you know, y'all had talked about some, looking into the solar farm issue and getting some legislation or amending the development rules, land use and things. Have y'all done anything or has that come up anymore?
You know, we have a draft prepared that'll be coming up, and I think it's the second meeting in July where these changes will be presented.
Second meeting in July?
August.
This is the second meeting in, well, it's. No, it's not, this one, we moved it back, we had to move it back because of the notice requirements when we lost, when we lost the Democrat. We had to move that back, so out of the river of, anyway, it'll be in August because of the notice requirement.
Have we heard anything about our, where do we stand on, you know, we had kind of a grant from the state to look at EOC and relocating it and doing some other things, where do we stand on that?
We didn't get a grant to relocate.
Well, no, to study or feasibility or something, dealing with EOC.
Architectural drawings.
Oh, we don't, yeah, we haven't got any drawings yet, we've got to procure the services, someone to work on that, but that hasn't occurred yet.
Okay. How about the radios for public safety?
That's very likely going to be in the budget for discussion in our workshops coming up in the first part of August.
Does that hurt anything at all, other than the Democrats?
The numbers are in there in the workshop documents, so commissioners will be able to discuss that with the sheriff, fire rescue, and those workshops.
Look, Mr. Hancock, I'll bring it up, we just got to, I got to convince these five people to help me out, but I, I play it.
I think, just to clarify that, though, it was very close when COVID got us.
I mean, it was, it was right there, COVID sent us back, so it's not something to forget about, trust me. And like Mr. Harris said, I mean, it's kind of up to discussion, so.
And the numbers are actually better today than the, no problem, had the conversation, I mean, the company came off with the numbers considerably, and some changes were made as well, so we've got far better numbers than what we started with. I think it was two million dollars before, and I think it's down around one point four now. So time has been on our side with that.
And the other thing, and Mr. Norris didn't mention it, pay attention, Jimmy.
Yes, sir.
He didn't mention anything at all about economic development, have we gotten that, just looking at the census?
It gave me a minute and a half.
Well, does the taxpayer help pay your salary? I'll give you more than that, after the meeting. Is that okay?
That's fine.
Okay.
I'll tell you what I can.
Well, that's another thing. If I'm paying your salary, I'm your boss. And I'm paying you to do a job. So you can tell me, I just don't have to tell anybody else.
And I would advise him not to. We signed a confidentiality agreement on these projects, just like we typically do, Mr. Hancock, so. You can push him on, as far, just as far.
Yeah, well, if I were to have answers, can you confirm or deny?
Uh, I will.
That's a good answer.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Hinkson. Anyone else wishing to speak on the floor? Seeing none, I'll close public comment. At this time, we'll have closing comments from the board and our favorite attorney. Mr. Pervade, you have anything for us?
Nothing in addition today, thank you, sir.
Thank you. Mr. Harris, closing comment.
Just a couple of things. One, I think we all recognized in the last regular meeting, we had probably more people than we had seating capacity in this building in order to maintain the distancing. I want to bring that up today to see if we have a plan on moving our meetings going forward back to the Coliseum until it looks like we can get back to something more normal. Because otherwise, we're just going to have to cut off out here at the door, particularly with some of the separate items that's going to be coming up concerning the future, but how people stand outside.
I don't think we can cut them off, except for the comb, we've got a little maintenance.
Yeah, I don't have a problem with it, I mean, I just think it takes a month, some month, a little month at a time.
Then we need to plan on going back to the Coliseum, to the regular, regular meeting zones. I'm not talking about these meetings for the continuation of the EOC. Typically, we wouldn't have these other items like we did tonight on this single out there. Assumptionally, we would typically keep these on brief weeks, but that's what we're planning on doing. One other thing I want to mention to you has to do with these meetings in the off weeks. I know that all of you commissioners have busy schedules. Some of you that have come when we've been renewing local states' emergency at the EOC during storms and other things, recognize that really we only need three commissioners here in order to accomplish that. I just want to mention to you that y'all could alternate, not attend all of these extension meetings coming from wherever you're coming from, or we could change the time to be more accommodative if you want to. In fact, we could change it to five o'clock, it would work better for you than more thirty. I'm just trying to come up with something that might help some of you that are traveling great distances to be here just for these extension meetings, I'm not talking about the regular meetings. And I know that all of you committed to be here for all the regular meetings, and I'm sure you'd be up for these as well, but it isn't necessary that everyone attend all of these extension meetings. In fact, Chairman, Vice Chairman, they also often make one time to time on that. I'm going to tell you that I think one thing the legislature needs to do is make a change in this business of these recurring local state emergency requirements. I think that once the board approves one, it should begin administrative function, or after until the board decides it's going to handle it together. Because these extensions, just like I said, we had meetings before that took three minutes. People were driving great distances to be here for that. We had an email that came in from the county recently asking for ideas on legislative issues that they could take up. And this might be a big one to take up. Because I think the state by probably, every local government has recognized that it's going to be done better than it seems.
I think for us commissioners, if, you know, if someone is a ways away and it's going to be on a weekly basis just to call your office, which is very valuable, and that you follow them, they kind of have a plan, a way ahead, but I'm saying they can call you and say, hey, you know, there's a possibility.
I just need three.
Right.
Yeah, if y'all get busy and want to call me and you've got something going on, as long as I can make sure I get three to show up, that's all we're going to do.
I think everybody wants to be there to represent the people, but I mean, there is times when you, you know, it's, I mean, my plan is to be here no matter what it is. And the time doesn't really matter, I mean, five o'clock, dude. I think it would have a lot, maybe the community, because if you can, after they get off.
Mr. Chairman, I just wanted to say that as long as it's just a decision on state emergency, I mean, if that's it, but when it comes into extended meetings like this, then obviously I want to be here, so. Being in fact, without voting, I will probably go with all this.
And this one was kind of, kind of an inception, I mean, it wasn't a privacy matter, it wasn't really, you know, something that's going there, just put it on there.
Yeah, you would always know if we had to add something, I mean, this is kind of very big.
Mr. Pervade, you have a comment?
Well, I mean, if y'all have the meetings at nine o'clock in the morning, then I could go from here to the golf course, one of the off.
That's, that's the reason we're not doing it.
I've got to keep it out there just in case.
It was actually proposed in earlier that we meet at the golf course.
I'm, I'm, I'm trying to, in fact, it would have been, uh, how deep?
I prefer the nine o'clock, but to be honest with you, five o'clock's better than four thirty, so.
I'm good with that. So we want our off, our emergency, just to renew it, we want them at five o'clock.
We can't have it at nine, but I'm, I'm in the, I'm doing, it's just easy to get started at nine and get done. But I can work either one or more.
I think, I think the consensus is you lost that, it's going to get five. So five o'clock on the, on the emergency declaration meetings, and six o'clock we'll stay at on our regular scheduled programming. First and third, and also next week, we will start back at the Coliseum.
And we've got meetings coming up on Mondays?
In August.
In August.
What is in August, yeah?
Mr. Chairman, would that, would all means, be going, only our regular board meetings going to the Coliseum?
Regular, just regular, okay.
By the way, we're here.
So we just turned something simple into something pretty complex. Anything else, Mr. Harris?
Uh, no, sir. Well, the, the week of August eighth through the fifteenth is early voting here. So we want, that's the middle week, that we would have our off week meeting here, and we're going back to the Coliseum. I think we'd already worked all that out, didn't we?
Have you?
Early voting starts August eighth through the fifteenth, so that's going to be the second week. The second, is that a Monday?
Yeah, we want to just move everything from here to the end of August to the Coliseum.
Probably simplify.
Yeah. Let's just do that. Starting next week, we're at the Coliseum till the end of August.
All right.
The times should stay the same as we discussed. Five o'clock on the emergency meetings, six o'clock on our regular board meetings.
That includes all budget.
Sir.
That includes all our budget meetings as well, sir.
Our budget periods.
Budget years. That's the first of August.
That's the first, they could be here.
They'll be here, we'll be okay here.
Happy budget, okay, here.
Okay, so it's only the second week of August.
Yeah, so second and third week, but then we set up in here for the election.
Anything else, Mr. Harris? Mr. Richardson, closing comments. Thank you, sir. Commissioner Fleming? Commissioner Gammel?
I just want to give a huge thank you and a great job to our sheriff's office. Over the weekend, we had a couple individuals somehow get past our house, get back to our property, wrecked the car, had the car towed off, come back in there later that afternoon and get stuck trying to recover their car. Car full of drugs, had some other stuff going on, but they responded promptly. Were very professional and courteous and just, Sheriff, thank you, and pass it on to those guys, they just, they did a great job. You see a lot of things going on right now, and they were, they were top notch when they came out and did it.
I passed one, when you called me that Saturday, I called them all and learned everything that you said, so. And they appreciate that, and thanks for the, had a, a respect.
They got there fast enough to keep you from going to jail.
It's always good, though.
It's very good.
Anything else?
That's all, Mr. Harris. Mr. Harris? Mr. Chairman, can I make a quick comment? I just thought of something as well, because Mrs. Vickers and I were over in the finance department wanting the budget information today. And I just want to say publicly how much I appreciate the job that they do for us over there putting those budget documents, all the big books that you're going to end up going through, put together by the finance department, Nina and Keith, and I don't know who else works on that, but they do a magnificent job. And this has been a particularly difficult year for them. We don't have revenue numbers yet, we're still waiting, they're going to come in in the twelfth hour, but they're over there scrambling, trying to put information together. We were slower getting information over there because of some of the issues with the COVID stuff and trying to get information that we needed with state and federal government. So they're working a real tight schedule. I'm confident they'll get that information out for us, but it isn't because it's an easy job. It's a massive undertaking, and I appreciate it very much.
Thank you, sir. Just like I said, we've had everybody be in here and participate in trying to help watch out for this county. It's a lot, longer days and hours and COVID going on, and what has to happen to have a meeting every week. And I appreciate our staff, everyone at Mr. Harris's office making that happen, and I appreciate everybody else for coming out every week. It's all the other county offices to be here, it's definitely a lot, but we're going to get through this, we're going to do it together. So this time, all it needs is a motion to adjourn. Got a motion by Commissioner Richardson?
Thank you.
Second, our Commissioner Hill, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.